Okay, so we wanted to provide the board with some information of the experiences we had while attending the NFL Draft in Detroit. If you forgot or unfamiliar, we did send a group of five individuals from the Village of Ashwabanon to Detroit for essentially a kind of a two-day visit to the draft area to kind of scope out and scout what all goes into the draft and what that experience is going to be like for us here, not only in Ashwabanon, but obviously northeast Wisconsin. So with me on that particular trip was Public Safety Chief Brian Yule, Deputy Chief Nick Kozlowski, Public Works Director Brian Rickert, Community Development Director Aaron Schutte. So we arrived in Detroit on the Wednesday preceding the first day of the draft, stayed through the first full day on Thursday, and then came back on that Friday morning. So we did not have the full three-day experience, but we certainly experienced the buildup to the draft as well as the busiest day. So I'll kind of walk through what we should expect here in Ashwabanon and northeast Wisconsin. So again, just a reminder, the 2025 draft is going to be in April of next year, between April 24th and 26th. However, the impacts of the draft itself will be much greater than that. The buildup and the takedown of the draft will extend well beyond those three days of the draft. At the time of the bid for the draft, it was estimated that the overall statewide impact would be roughly $94 million in economic value. Based on the experiences that the state of Michigan had, as well as the city of Detroit, if we see the same type of numbers that they saw at our draft, that number will be shattered. 2023 draft was held in Kansas City. As a reference, they estimated about 312,000 fans attended that draft. And then if you paid attention to the news, they estimated that the fans in Detroit were well in advance of 700,000, so more than double than what was experienced in Kansas City. In addition to that, those numbers seem to continue to increase as well, so that it's more closer to 800,000. For us, just kind of as a reference, if you're not an NFL fan, or maybe haven't paid much attention to the draft itself, it is a three-day event. So Thursday is the kickoff day of the draft, and that features what will be called the first round of the draft, and those are the highest prospects, if you will. So hopefully, the Packers are picking on the lower end of the first round. That means we did a good job the year before. If you pick first, like the Chicago Bears always do, that usually means that they didn't have as good of a season. So the first round is done on Thursday. That is the highest-attended day of the draft. So the most amount of people attending the draft are on that day. Friday, the second and third rounds occur, and then Saturday, fourth, fifth, and sixth rounds happen. Now, again, we weren't there on Saturday, but we've been told by other attendees that that's generally the highest family attendance. Now, with that being said, I would say all three days are generally family-friendly. We did see a number of families on Thursday during that first round, but by and large, it was mostly young adults, if you will, that were attending the draft. The draft itself has a draft campus area, and that campus area will be broken into two parts. The NFL Theater, which is basically what you see on TV, and then the NFL Experience is really where the activities and activation happens inside the campus that the NFL sponsors and puts together. The draft itself is a free-to-enter program, so you don't need to have a ticket, you don't have to pay anything to enter the draft. All that they ask that you do at this time, anyway, is to download an app that the NFL has called the One Pass. You register yourself as an attendee to the draft, and then that's the app that keeps you informed as to all the different activities that are happening in the draft. I suppose that they are using the app to track you as well, because they use that information to determine if the draft campus has reached capacity. And we did experience that on Thursday at about 6:00, 5:30, between 5:30 and 6:30 PM, the draft campus met the capacity requirements that the NFL and Homeland Security had established, and they basically shut down entry into the draft at that time. So they basically turned people away after that part, and the official draft itself on that Thursday night hadn't even begun yet. So it did reach capacity beforehand. There are high-security requirements. I would consider it very comparable to what you'd experience entering Lambeau Field on game day. So one of the things that will happen at the onset of the draft process is the buildup. And part of the buildup, or the largest aspect of the buildup, is to create the theater part of the campus, and that theater part will encompass a large temporary theater or stage area. So here you can see in the city of Detroit, they're beginning the construction process of that theater area. We've been told by Detroit officials, as well as individuals associated with the NFL, that that buildup could take about six to eight weeks, depending on the complexity of that construction. We'll talk about at the end as to where we anticipate that stage area to be, so you can kind of see where those impacts are. But even though the draft is only three days, anticipate at least six to eight weeks of pretty substantial impact to the general area of the campus for that buildup. This picture doesn't really give it much understanding of scale, but I personally think it's very similar to if you were to take the rest center, cut it in half, pick it up, and set it down, that's about the size of the theater. It's huge. We've been told by NFL officials that the stage in Detroit was the smallest stage that they had constructed for a draft, and to anticipate that that stage area would be much larger when it comes here to Green Bay. The next thing that you'll see as you go through the buildup process is the NFL coming in and adding a variety of different signage throughout the area to promote the draft. And so you'll see banners like this on light poles that the NFL will establish. These primarily are inside the draft campus, but you will begin to see some of these areas on the gateways coming into the campus areas as well. Generally speaking, it's promoting the draft, and certainly the NFL franchises that make up the league. In addition to that, now, we don't have many tall, high-rise buildings in the proposed draft campus area, but in Detroit, you can see many sponsors were placing banners on large, high-rise buildings to promote the draft, promote their enterprise, and then kind of be affiliated as part of that picturesque scene at the draft. In the campus area, so this kind of picture on the left-hand side, to give it kind of scale, if you were to take probably like four to six large billboard, billboards, and placard them on the side of the building, that's how many, how big that banner is. It was tremendously large. These banners, for the most part, were these vinyl kind of screen-type materials that are fastened to the buildings. But interestingly, the picture on the right, it appeared that this banner was actually painted on the building. So I'm not exactly sure what's going to happen after the draft is completed, as to whether that banner's going to be removed, or if it's going to be repainted with something different. I'm not exactly certain. But anticipate there will likely be these types of large banners somewhere within the draft campus. Whether they're fastened to buildings or put on temporary structures, it is likely that this type of signage is going to be anticipated. Beyond that, as the campus builds out for that six-to-eight-week period, anticipate the area to be secured and locked down. And what that basically encompasses are these large, eight-foot-high kind of chain-link, if you will, fence panels that will be wrapped in banners that have signage both on the interior of those panels, as well as the exterior. Interior, obviously, it's promotional to the draft. Exterior, a lot of times, it's wayfinding signage, as depicted here. In addition to that, all of that barrier fencing is going to be wrapped and barricaded with Jersey Barrier. So there are Jersey barriers either on the outside, and that Jersey barrier are basically these concrete slabs that you see here, or on the interior side to prevent vehicular traffic from ramming through that secure fence area. And they have to meet Homeland Security requirements as far as placement is concerned to ensure that is safe. Here's just an image that shows you kind of the interior of the, actually, this is the exterior yet. So you can see it kind of, again, promotes the draft, promotes the franchises that make up the league, so on and so forth. This picture was interesting because this was the exterior of the draft campus, and immediately adjacent to that, next to the sidewalk, are businesses that are open for operation. So the road, in this particular case, on this stretch, had been closed for a week to two weeks, and yet these businesses still had to operate and survive even in this type of environment. The other thing that we found interesting is there's just a variety of telecommunications that, infrastructure that comes into place into the draft area. Much of this is temporary. They fix those telecommunication components and infrastructure to existing facilities like light poles, or they bring it into portable towers. So one of the things that the NFL will do to ensure that it is a secure environment is they will be bringing in thousands of cameras into the draft campus area that will both be permanently affixed to structures and will be left behind, or temporary infrastructure to provide that security within the draft campus. Now, all of that is generally wireless technology, and so they have secure wireless technology endpoints that come in and get installed throughout the entire area. So you'll start to see that infrastructure go up as part of the build-out. One of the things that the NFL has indicated that they'll do is what's called activation events, and those are both during the buildup of the draft, as well as during the draft and shortly thereafter. This particular image, this is, I believe, Drake May. He was one of the first-round draft picks, quarterback, so a high prospect, and he was being sponsored through Raising Cane's Restaurants. And so Raising Cane's had Drake come in, cook some chicken in their food truck, and then sign some autographs for fans as part of a meet-and-greet. So these types of activation areas do happen inside the draft campus, but they also happen outside the draft campus in surrounding communities. So in our particular case, you might see a prospect like Drake May sign autographs at, you know, some type of franchise restaurant in Ashwabanon, or in DePere, or in Bellevue. And so there will be that activation that happens not only in the campus, but also in the surrounding communities, that could present an opportunity for those communities and those businesses to take advantage. Now to talk a little bit more about the draft campus, as I mentioned, the overall campus in Detroit was broken into two components, the theater and the experience. Those are highlighted in that red boundary area, the theater being the yellow area and the experience being the blue area. Interestingly, when we were there, we were told that the experience and theater are all part of the campus, but as the activities began and the draft commences on Thursday night, there is a possibility that the theater area could be closed off from the experience. So there was a capacity that the theater had, there was a capacity that the experience had, and at some point, those areas may be closed off to one another to ensure that they maintain that capacity threshold that they've established. In the theater area, you'll notice that in this particular image, you have the lighter yellow, and then you have the darker yellow areas. The lighter-yellow areas are those areas in which the fans are participating in. The darker areas are within the secure campus, but generally, those are secured within the secure campus because they represent the theater, the backstage area, all the support infrastructure that's necessary to put on the theater experience. This is an image that we had taken. It probably is, I'm guessing, maybe 4:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon on that Thursday. So again, the festivities haven't really begun. You can see the size of the crowd that is making its way to that theater. Again, as I mentioned, that temporary stage is very large, so anticipate kind of a rush, think rush center, that's about as big as it's going to be. Takes about six weeks to build out. Within that theater area, there are what's called the VIP area, which I'll describe in a moment. There are areas that are set aside for individuals with disabilities, in particular wheelchair access, so that they have a visual of the theater. And then the area that you're seeing on this screen of these fans is what's considered general admission, if you will. These are the low-hanging fruit participants, if you will, not the VIPs. The key thing that we were told, and certainly something that we experienced, is that the draft itself is a TV production. As a participant at the draft, you should view yourself as an extra in a TV production. So there's not a whole lot of activities planned for you in the theater area. You're just there to make their TV show look good, and they do a good job of that. And you'll see that as we go through some of these other images about TV productions and production studios, so on and so forth. We already talked about those support areas being Prospect Room, the green room for a variety of celebrities and other figures, and then there's those backstage support areas. So here's an image from the stage itself, and so when you're looking out from the stage into the general admission crowd, and if you were to watch the draft on TV, you see all these crazy people dressed up in these crazy gear, supporting their teams, those are the VIPs. So you need to be invited by the clubs in order to be in that VIP area. Generally speaking, those are the super fans. So if you think about Lambeau Field, and think of the gentleman that wears the frozen tundra cheese head, he's a super fan. There are others like him that love to get dressed up and act crazy. Those are the folks they want in the front rows, because those are the ones that are going to get on TV, and they want that to look good for TV purposes. Beyond that, the VIP area is also invite-only by those clubs, so think of individuals that may have sponsored to bring the draft here, individuals that paid money for the local organizing committee to support the draft initiative itself, they would get an invite to that support area as well. So Mary does not have a ticket into the VIP area. I do not have a ticket into the VIP area. People should not text, email, or call asking for tickets to the VIP area. We are not important people enough to meet that. Unless we dress up as super fans, we're not getting in, okay? Now with that, there are times during the draft, maybe second, third round, fourth, fifth, and sixth round, where those super fans, those VIPs, aren't there. There is a capacity amount for that VIP. If you're upfront enough in the general admission, and you want to come in for supporting a particular club, and there's space for you, they may invite you in. We did not experience that because there was just too many people there. One thing I'll also note is that this is a TV production, so there are booths inside the stage, right here on the right, and then there's a booth here on the left. One of the booths is likely ESPN, and that's where they do their full day-long or days-long coverage of the draft. The other one is the NFL Network. So when you're on the admissions, our general admission side, there are these large video boards that are up, and what they're doing is they are showing you the television show that is being produced in the studio behind the video board. So again, made-for-TV production. This is just an aerial image of the crowd. Again, this is probably late afternoon, I'm guessing somewhere between 2:00 and maybe 4:30 PM, and you can see the crowd. It got much busier after that, when they brought in their entertainment for the night. It certainly got busier, and then it kind of thinned out after the entertainment came in. The point that I want to bring here is just kind of showing this area. This is that dark-yellow area that was in that map. These are the support areas. This is all VIP, food, beverage, and bathroom facilities, as well as other support areas. So the VIPs have their own special area that they could go to, and if you notice, it's kind of tucked off into the corner because they don't want it to show on TV. So everything's tucked off. General admission folks, they were tucked way in the back here, and I'll show a couple images of that, but again, bathroom, food, beverage, everything was tucked off to the side. And one of the comments that I think we all collectively shared is that there weren't simply enough beverage, food, or bathroom facilities within the campus to support the volume of people that they had, and so that's something that we will certainly ask the NFL for support on. The other thing I'll mention is that there's these TV studios back here, and so there was a lot of interaction between the TV shows that were being produced during the buildup of the draft. If you watch College Game Day, popular figure is Pat McAfee, so he was pretty active in getting the crowd engaged and entertained during commercial breaks, and so there was some activity that way. So again, here's TV studios. Again, they want you in the background, because the more people that they show, the more excitement that the production brings. They constructed a three-story temporary television studio, so this is that. So anticipate seeing these types of things coming into place as well into Green Bay. The kickoff of the draft itself generally brings in some type of local, well-known national artist. This happens to be Big Sean. He's a rapper, hip-hop artist from the Detroit area, so he performed for about 30 minutes and kind of got the crowd rallied around the draft itself. There were a lot of people that came to the theater area just to see Big Sean, and once his performance was done, they left. So they weren't NFL fans, they were more interested in seeing him perform. Again, a Detroit native, so there was a tie to the community. We do not know who that kickoff concert act will be. We had suggested maybe bringing in the Cougars, because they're, you know, the most well-known band in the area, but I don't think it's going to be that.
Glam Band.
The Glam Band, yep. For those of you that either like or dislike fireworks, there will be fireworks. So if you like them, great for you. If you dislike fireworks, be prepared. Generally speaking, at the end of every draft night, there is some type of firework display, either big or small, but there will likely be fireworks at the end of each night. This is just a quick image of the overall food and beverage area in the general admission. So this is it. You had a half a dozen to 10 individual food tents for tens of thousands of people. What we found interesting with this is that these vendors were certainly individual and unique. They were likely, let's say, a food truck vendor, or maybe a small restaurant local to Detroit, and they had their own food tent. But they are highly regulated by the NFL, so all the food prices, it was quite clear they were fixed. And when you made payment to the vendor, you got a receipt back from the NFL. So they likely paid the NFL, and the NFL contracted with these vendors to provide these food and beverage tents. This is all they had. All of us ate lunch at this on a Thursday, and then a few of us attempted to go over there for dinner when we were there, and the lines were 50, 60 deep for each vendor. All of us spent probably between $20 and $25 for a typical lunch meal at that vendor. So that kind of gives you an idea of what ticket prices are, or food prices. Beverages, I would say, are very comparable to what you'd experience at a Packer game on game day. The bathrooms were unique. They did have the traditional portable toilets, but they also brought these flushable portable toilets. So if you're like my daughter, who does not like toilets that don't flush, this is for you. Interestingly, these are tied directly to the sanitary sewer system, and so they had banks of these at specific locations within the draft area, again, tucked off to the side, so as not to be picked up on the television production that's being aired on TV. Now moving on to the overall experience area, again, this is that blue area. This is really kind of the activation space, so this is where you have a variety of different activities. There are plenty of opportunities for photographs, so each NFL team is represented with a helmet, with kind of a statue to take selfies with. There are other engagement options or opportunities that some of us may be familiar with when the experience has come before, such as like 40-yard dash, vertical leaps, some throwing competitions. We found it interesting, because there were two tents, one set up where you could actually see the Lombardi Trophy, one where you could see and kind of touch Super Bowl rings. Those are really popular for Detroit fans, because they've never experienced that before. So for us in Green Bay, that might not be that, might not be that big of a deal, so. So this is an image of the overall campus. This is early on. This does fill in throughout the day, and so there's tents, again, for those experience points. The other thing that happens in the NFL Experience area are those meet-and-greets. So throughout the day, on the hour, there are different media personalities, NFL players, draft prospects that come into areas where you can meet, greet, get autographs, and be entertained with that. These are those statues that I was talking about. So again, every NFL team is represented. In Detroit, there were very, very long lines for the Detroit helmet, the Detroit statue. There is an individual Detroit Lions experience component within it. Lines were extremely long. So if you're a Packer fan, and your first exposure to Packers kind of regalia, if you will, is at the draft, you may want to come in advance and visit Lambeau before that, because it's, the lines will be extremely long. And throwing competitions, we did see Canada when we were there, so that was interesting. Then the other thing about the campus is this area called Woodward Avenue, or Draft Day in the D. So Woodward Avenue is kind of that main street of downtown Detroit. If you've not been there, think of boutique shops, restaurants, hotels, clubs. On the very far north end of this street is Comerica Park, where the Tigers play, and adjacent to that is Ford Field, where the Lions play. This entire stretch was over 2,000 feet, so comparable to if you were to take, let's say, Oneida Street from Lombardi Avenue down to Cormier Street, that entire length of street was closed and activated for draft day activities. And so this happened through that full-three-day affair of Detroit. One thing we'll mention is when we got down to the draft on Thursday, we got there shortly before noon, entered the draft campus. The draft campus opens at noon. There isn't a whole lot of stuff going on inside the draft campus. There weren't a whole lot of people there. We were kind of joking in advance of the draft, boy, it just seems like there's not a whole lot going on. I wonder how well-attended this is going to be. And so when we were on the campus, we kind of felt that same way, and then we were advised that we should go out of the campus and view the Woodward Avenue area and get to what was called the red carpet for the prospects. And so when we did that, we were immediately greeted by tens of thousands of people, and it was an instant shocker to us by the mass volumes of people. So when you hear those stories of 700-plus thousand people in Detroit, they weren't all in the campus. They were everywhere in downtown Detroit. So this was put on through both the NFL and downtown Detroit partnership, which you would consider kind of like kind of a bid district slash Chamber of Commerce. It encompassed not only Woodward Avenue, but there were seven parks throughout the downtown area that had different activities and events in it. And again, as I mentioned, about a mile of Woodward Avenue. It was a secure area outside of the campus, so it was closed to vehicular traffic. There were security checkpoints when you entered it, so it was interesting for us because we were in the campus, secure. We had to go through security. Immediately after exiting the campus, we had to go through security again to enter into the draft in the D Experience. This wasn't completely managed and controlled by the NFL, so here is where there was opportunities for things like food trucks, retail shops, and boutiques. They were all open for business, and so there was an opportunity for that. So here's just an image of us going through. We exited the campus, and immediately, we were greeted with additional security, and we had to go through that as well. And as we entered in here, we had lines and lines of food trucks and other vendors within the area that were there to activate draft in the D. There was a variety of different art exhibits, so they had not only these kind of DET letters that you could draw and sign your name to, I'm not sure exactly where they're going with those afterwards, but there were also these cleats that were represented by each NFL team, in which you could activate and participate on those as well. And again, every business along the stretch, if they wanted to be open, could be open. And so you see, like Dunkin' Donuts was open, there's a Verizon store, and in that Verizon store, you can see this NFL draft canvas in the background. That was an activation area, so they had a prospect there for meet-and-greet, Verizon being a large sponsor of the NFL. And again, vendors, people everywhere, music, the whole nine yards. So what do we know about what's coming for the NFL Draft, and what is our focus? So right now, Discover Green Bay, along with the Green Bay Packers, are actively engaged with the NFL in doing the preliminary planning of the draft here. And we are a part of that process, albeit at this time somewhat limited, but as we continue to move along, we'll continue to get more and more engaged in that effort. So recognizing that we don't necessarily, at this present time, have a whole lot of activation and engagement with the NFL, we felt it was necessary for us internally to become more activated in planning and preparing for the draft. So we've created five internal committees of staff members. Different department heads are leading each of these groups, and we're beginning to ask the questions and plan and prepare for what Ashwabanon needs to focus on as we lead to that 25 draft. So the first group is a pre-planning and logistics group. They're really focused on transportation, parking, road closures, toilet facility, sanitation, things of that nature. So what do we need to acquire and plan for as we prepare for that draft? We recognize the NFL, the Packers, Discover Green Bay are really going to be focused more on the campus area. We need to focus on that area that's going to be impacted outside of the campus. Obviously, public safety and public works are a big part of the operations, and so they're actively meeting with the NFL, Packers, and Discover Green Bay, and planning the security protocols that are going to be necessary to pull off this event. We have an activation and events group that's really focused on business involvement, so if you think about that draft in the D element, what are our businesses going to do, and how can we coalesce with them to develop the best plan of action to make sure that they can maximize their business opportunities at the draft? So looking at possibly making an activation area similar to Woodward Avenue somewhere in the Village. We have, obviously, information, promotion, and marketing of the Village, and really what we're going to be focusing on that aspect is really community engagement. So we recognize Discover Green Bay, the Packers, the NFL, they're going to do a fantastic job of communicating to the general public for participating at the draft. But we don't necessarily have to spend a whole lot of time doing that. That's going to be done for us. We're just going to tie into that. What we need to be focused on is how is this going to impact our local businesses, our local residents, what local residents, what does this look like when a road gets closed, for how long, what are the detours? How can I, you know, get to and from church, to the grocery store, so on and so forth? That's really what our focus is going to be on, is are the residents of Ashwabanon, the businesses of Ashwabanon, and how can we inform them and educate them of all the impacts that the draft may have, and how to really kind of maximize that. And then finally, we'll have a committee that's really focused on beautification and wayfinding. Very clear to us when we came into Detroit, we stayed at a, we flew into the airport, which is on the far west end of town, we stayed at a hotel on the west end, and when we went downtown, we had to drive on the interstate. It was very apparent, there was a very strong concerted effort to do a lot of right-of-way maintenance, so a lot of mowing, invasive species removals, litter pickup, graffiti, any dilapidated buildings, things of that nature were cleaned up, boarded up, and looked good. Detroit, they really put on a great show, they did a fantastic job, and so we recognize that we have corridors, that we have an opportunity to maybe clean and make a more presentable environment for visitors into our area, and so that beautification and wayfinding group is really focused on that aspect. And so just kind of quickly to touch on this, what we wanted to see is what did the draft campus in Detroit look like in comparison to what we would experience here in Ashwabanon and Green Bay? So if you were to take by scale the boundary of the draft campus in Detroit, that's that red border, and place it on top of that Lambeau Field area, you can see that the overall area of Lambeau and Title Town would encompass and certainly carry the draft experience that was held in Detroit. The area that's kind of highlighted in yellow is what we anticipate the overall draft campus to encompass, we don't know that for sure. The NFL, what we've been told is in Detroit, they were making changes all the way up till the week before the draft. We'll have an idea of a general campus location, and certainly as we proceed through the remainder of this year and then going into next year, it will continue to get more and more clear or more and more concrete as we go along. But we do anticipate this to be the general area. The blue arrow on the map represents where we anticipate that theater area, the stage to be located. So we do anticipate the stage to be built on or near Oneida Street. So I would anticipate that Oneida Street will be closed, or a portion thereof, on the north end of Oneida Street by the Expo Center for a duration of six weeks or more. That stage will eventually be tied into the Rush Expo. The Expo will likely be used as kind of that backstage area. So rather than like in Detroit, they actually built temporary structures for all of those backstage production areas, here they will simply use the Expo. So the Prospect Room, the Green Rooms, the backstage production, everything will be housed in the Expo Center, and will actually make our draft campus that much more efficient for the NFL and for the fan experience. Areas that in Title Town anticipate, things like the condominiums, the apartment buildings, things of that nature, they will likely be outside of the campus. So even though the campus will extend into Title Town, they are not going to take residences and put them inside the secure area. Is one of the things that the NFL will need to do in partnership with our local public safety, is any of the buildings that are surrounding the campus, they will need to be swept for security purposes, and that includes bringing through bomb dogs and things of that nature to make sure that the buildings are secure. So what can citizens look for over the course of certainly the next few months? First and foremost, obviously, there's been a lot of interest about short-term rentals, and we're certainly going to be talking about that tonight as another agenda item. But if individuals are looking to make their home a short-term rental or convert a home to short-term rentals, the Discover Green Bay, in concert with the Room Tax Commission and all of the local municipalities, have created kind of a one-stop shop, if you will, on how to go about that properly and lawfully. So it's important that if people are looking to rent their home out, that they're ensuring that they get any proper permits that are necessary for that rental, and then all the necessary inspections to ensure that property is safe and secure for those guests. There will be plenty of opportunities for individuals to be volunteers, to support the draft, or, you know, temporary seasonal employment opportunities. Those are also on the Discover Green Bay website, so if you're interested in helping out, you can certainly register that way. For businesses and vendors, there is a Business Connect program by the NFL, and so I would encourage any businesses that are interested in partnering with the NFL directly and being a part of the campus experience, they register directly with the NFL. Again, that's on Discover Green Bay's website. So those could be things like mobile food establishments, direct sellers, things of that nature. With that being said, even though you may be partnering with the NFL, you still, if you're a vendor, would need to acquire the necessary permits in order to lawfully vend in the village. One of the things that will be especially noted is that oftentimes during a Packer game day, there are direct sellers that sell merchandise that are affiliated with an NFL franchise or the NFL itself. The NFL will be strictly cracking down on that, you will not, if you are a vendor that plans to sell green and gold necklaces, or Packer helmets, or, you know, makeshift uniforms or anything to that effect, that will likely be shut down pretty quick by the NFL. So find a different thing to sell, it will be highly regulated to ensure that you meet the branding requirements from the NFL. Obviously, look for ways to inform and promote and market your business. There's going to be a large captive audience coming to our area, and this is a great opportunity for you to promote your business. And certainly from a beautification standpoint, we're going to do what we can within public right-of-ways and public areas to beautify and provide wayfinding, but this is a great opportunity for you to kind of, if you have a building that needs to be painted, or a sign that needs to be repaired, or some landscaping that needs to be refurbished, now would be a great time to do it, do it now, because in April, it'll be too late because we'll be coming just out of winter, and at that time, it'll be difficult. So look at ways to beautify your individual property as well. Oftentimes, you see that when a community refurb's a road, reconstructs a road, oftentimes those businesses fix up their facade, or replace a sign, or do some landscaping improvements. This would be a good opportunity for you as well to do that, to really highlight your business. So with that, that was our experience. Gary, how'd I do? Was it better than the first time you saw it?
Well, it's about, I've got it pretty well memorized, so I think I can pick up after you. Joel, a couple of quick questions that I have. The first question I thought of, what are we doing as a village to make ourselves known? We're surrounded by that community, or I should say, the Packer field by three sides. As of right now, nobody knows where Ashwabanon is. I hope we're going to do something there. It seems like you've got the ball rolling as far as committees getting things going. The only other two questions I have is how long is a teardown to get this village back in shape? And how good was the sound when you were in the campus?
So to go through the three things that you had mentioned, so yes, so from a wayfinding standpoint, signage standpoint, that's one of the aspects of one of our committees, is to look into that and then prepare kind of an estimated budget. So with that being said, all of the committees, as they're working right now, they are working to identify what needs to be done, and then whatever that is, what is that going to cost? Because ultimately, we're going to need to bring that before the board and ultimately budget for those expenditures. So that's where we're at with that, and one of those aspects is wayfinding, signage, and community acknowledgement. To, I believe, answer your next question, sound was, or excuse me, the teardown. We anticipate the teardown to be about one to two weeks.
That long.
At least on the stage component of it. Obviously, any of those other areas within the campus, as they're shut down, they are not shut down for the full six to eight weeks. There may be soft closures here and there to allow equipment and other infrastructure to be put into place, but as an example, Ridge Road, that will likely be, a portion of Ridge Road will be in the campus, that will likely remain open up until the draft itself, and then it will close. And those areas would open shortly thereafter the draft's ending time. The only thing that would remain shut down for that teardown period would be that area where the stage is. Sound, I thought, was good, I think everybody would agree, there are speakers everywhere. Now I will add this comment too, in Detroit, there were no areas within the theater unless you had an ADA accommodation or VIP for seating. So it was a standing-room-only crowd. I have been told from individuals at the Packer organization that the NFL is considering bringing temporary grandstands into our draft to allow areas for seating, because that was a complaint that they did receive in Detroit. So we don't know that for sure, there's certainly still a lot of unanswered questions, but we do know that they are discussing that as part of the planning efforts for this upcoming draft.
You know, a question I get asked quite a bit, the stage area, is that going to be shutting down Oneida Street is the question I get thrown at quite a bit.
It more than likely will close down Oneida Street, so it'll be on that north end, so generally think of how Oneida Street closes for Packer Game Day, I think we close it around Stadium Drive, maybe Armed Forces. It'll be closed like that, but for an extended period of time.
A longer period of time, because they're literally going to build a stage on the street itself, then, is what you're saying?
There is a possibility, I can't say that for certain, but we are told that that is a certain possibility, yes.
Okay, you've answered a few questions I had.